Hello and welcome to the Monday, October 17th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 13th, 2022 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. If we could please take role.
Mr. Gillette, Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kidd, Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Here.
Ms. Nurse, Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here.
Mr. Hio.
Here.
And Mr. Murray.
Here. We have a quorum. I'll make a motion to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the state of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are a student matter and superintendent search. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll return in seven. Thank you. Hello and welcome back. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, October 17th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. We're now back from executive session. If we could please take role.
Mr. Gillette, Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kidd, Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Here.
Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here.
Ms. Trahill.
Here.
And Mr. Murray.
Here. We have a quorum. It's good timing. All right, let's stand for the pledge allegiance. All right, I would just acknowledge the correspondence as listed. We have no additional committee reports, and we'll move directly into the...
Training?
Yes. All right, let's do that. You don't have this memorized?
I do.
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
Just nod. Good evening. My name is John Gordon Kidd. I'm a legal specialist with the Legal One Office in the New Jersey Superior District Association. Here tonight, I have a review of HIB laws. By my background, I am an attorney. I've been at Legal One for four years, was in the state of New Jersey for 30 years before that. I was a deputy attorney general representing the Department of Education for 10 years, and some years in the department. I ran state board of deals. I was the first, mostly special, retired four years ago as senior special director, and the next day started doing this work, training school staff and education laws. So we go to the next slide. Quick disclaimer, yes, I'm an attorney. Any questions or encouraged questions as we go through the overview of the law cannot give you legal advice on your board of attorneys to do that. So happy to answer all the questions. I'll treat them all like hypotheticals and happily answer them because you're going to take the legal advice. PowerPoint, you'll have a copy of. You can do it as you like. We just ask how to paper a little law if you turn me up for stamp. Just give us a credit for the PowerPoint. Take the wood. It's at the link, so I can send it to the board members. Links for third days you download the PowerPoint. But if you're not interested now, I'll still send the copy of PowerPoint. Happy to send it to you, so no problem. I'm ready for all this attention. Next slide. So we have a rule over HIB laws, definition, the recent amendments to the law, they all changed in January this year, or substantial provisions to the law, some new forums that you have to work with, we're going for some of that, the state initiative at the end of office, so now you have the forums that are mandatory to be used, policy of what we mentioned about the students need to do, regular mandates and the like, and their impact on the HIB laws. We'll talk a little about your training here, who's there and who needs a specific mastery program with our office, so we'll go a little bit into that, and training for Hillsborough, couple Supreme Court decisions and all, again, and having a school for operating, some of these cases, looking at our case law, Q and A certainly, again, and at any point, if you have any questions, just if you're not sure what the books are about, just speak up, ask your questions. Happy to answer them for you. Next slide. So definition, I've included all just one slide, they're actually really long, some complicated definition, I've synthesized three bullets, but basically you're talking, you have to have an act, and it could be a single act, if we multiple acts, bullying does not have to occur over time. One incident comes to bullying in the law, has to be based on an actual or perceived characteristic. So it's important to note here, bullying doesn't have to have a characteristic, you just have a perceived one's happening. So the bully is basically fully definition categories, it could be any of the things in the law against discrimination, race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, disability, but it can be a lot of other characteristics. So it can be things like you're the new student, you have likes, what your parent does for a little, it could be bullying for that, these are all things that are different amount of case law to constitute characteristics for purposes and violating the bullying laws. So a lot of characteristics, probably half the cases or more, are actually based on other characteristics. So it could be, and even things in New Jersey could be hairstyle. Our law against discrimination now, for against discrimination based on hairstyle, after the student had to have his haircut in order to wrestle a couple of years ago, that's added to our law against discrimination. So where our laws were older than the federal Title VI and Title VII and the like, we have some extra categories. Key part of the definition though, it's, I'm going to step back for one second, it's a reasonable, actual perceived characteristic as perceived by the victim. So to keep in mind in the bullying cases, doesn't matter what the perpetrator intended, doesn't matter if who's a joke, doesn't matter even if you're a student with a disability and your disability caused a conduct, still bullying if it's reasonably perceived by the victim as being based on a characteristic actual or perceived. You might not suspend an student with a disability, the disability caused a conduct, but that is not, it doesn't excuse bullying because it still meets the definition of the law. Joking still meets the definition because you're not looking at what the perpetrator intended, you're looking at the reasonable perception of the victim. And again, it's a reasonable victim standard, so what would a reasonable perpetrator, reasonable level for it, whatever it is, at maturity level, you're looking at a reasonable person at that age and that maturity level is what you're looking at. And you have to have substantial disruption or interference. And it's important, you have to disrupt a student or a group of students, the operation of the school. He said something, Jared, said something to me, bothers me for five minutes or so, then we have lunch together, we're hanging out, I don't care anymore. There's no substantial disruption, won't meet the definition of bullying. It has to have a disruption, that impact on the person, school, students not attending schools, their grades drop, they're, won't ride the buses because the bullying happened on the bus. Could be things at home, you're talking to the parents about it, but you have to have that disruption, or it could be a group of students are disrupted by anxiety problems in the school, you have students, it's disrupting classes or whatever, based on what was said, without the substantial disruption, you're not going to get the definition of bullying. And a lot of it, we'll talk about, but it could just be conflict. A lot of times, students just did a fight, like arguing, that doesn't make it bullying, that means two students are arguing, and that's what a lot of the cases probably overhave. Turn out to just be conflicts, not bullying incidents, doesn't mean they might not be subject to your code of conduct, something might happen, but not everything, everything that's said, everything that happens is always a bullying incident, that's why I have to investigate them all, figure out whether it's yet. But the third part of the definition, which you have the disruption, perceived characteristic, you have to have a fear of harm to self or property, actual a fear of harm, mean to student or a group of students, or hostile education bond, you have to have one of them as the third part of the test. It's a three-part test, you have to meet all parts, that's what your ABSs are doing, but they investigate these cases. You have to figure out what happened, what was the characteristic, was it reasonably perceived by the victim as being based on that characteristic? That's another thing you have to look at, you have to look at disruption, and then harm to the student or group of students. If you can meet all three parts of the test, then you meet the bullying definition in New Jersey. And again, remember, doesn't matter if you're joking, what the perpetrator was thinking, it's what the perception of the victim is. And remember too, it's an actual or perceived characteristic. So if you're bullied because you think I'm gay, it doesn't matter whether or not, if you think it, that's the reason you're bullying me for it. If it turns out that you meet the three-part test, doesn't matter if it's an actual characteristic, it's perceived that way, still meets the definition. So that's what your ABSs are looking at. And again, keep in mind, you have a conflict when you're looking at bullying versus conflict, when you're looking at that, a lot of things will just be conflicts between students. So things happen, you have a conflict between students, might not be bullying definition, might violate your code of conduct, it could be reckless, but not everything's going to be bullying. But remember, it has to be equal, or at least close to equal, to be a conflict. So if we're having an argument, Mr. Murray and I, we're going back and forth equally, arguing with each other, that's fine, you had a conflict, maybe we'll be disciplined for it, doesn't mean it's bullying. If he's going at me all day, saying things based on whatever characteristic, going, 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 I turn and say one thing back to him, that still could constitute bullying. Conflict's got to be equal, not, all right, I said one thing, but you kept going. Sometimes you may have a conflict that turns into more. Like if we add about the conflict, and then I start saying or doing something the next day, what have you. So you can start out bullying, turn out the other, but a lot of what they'll investigate will actually just be conflicts, and we won't find everything to constitute bullying. That's why I give the ABSs have to go through the cases. To come from first bullying, this one, fifth grade student, he, they had a, basically they gave a reward for attendance for class, this student was absent, students started getting on him because he caused them to lose the pizza party, which when you're a fifth grade student can actually make a difference. And students were upset with this student over that, it was conflict back and forth, somebody commented on the smell in the cafeteria, the student thought it was about him, but basically, they couldn't conclude that there was any distinguishing characteristic, they were arguing with him, the argument started because he didn't show up enough with the attendance contest in the school, but at the end of the day, it wasn't based on a characteristic, there was no, nothing, no characteristic of his that they based it on, his smell allegation was found to not constitute a characteristic, it wasn't based on that comment about the smell, which is why your ABSs have to always investigate everything. Quickly, they have 10 days to investigate, it's a fast process, but they got to look into it, you look at the allegations, you have to figure out, the witnesses in the other, doesn't actually fit with the definition of bullying. In this case, they said it was just kids arguing, they were mad because they didn't think their pizza party, he thought that it was based on him, some characteristic of his, and then show the characteristic. Next slide. So at the end of the day, there was no evidence, you know, the smell was about him, so they, Commissioner, Administrator, law judge, because it goes through the process, goes to the superintendent, comes to the Board of Education, you make the final call for, modify, reject the determination, then it's appeal called to the commission. We have several thousand bullying cases a year, certain number of them end up going appeal to the commission, the majority do not. Most end at the Board of Education level, when you make the final determination, but with six to eight thousand cases filed a year in the districts around the state, a certain number will go up on appeal, that's your next level of appeal, is commissioner, then you can go to the courts if you're still not satisfied with the result, but that's a small number that actually go beyond the Board of Education level. So what do you think here? Student brings an issue to your attention, but asks that the district not investigate, I'll just call the board president out, what do you think, or if anyone else wants to type up, if a student brings it to you and says, well, don't do anything about it.
You still have to. You still have to.
Good answer, yes. You can't unknow something. So once a student comes to anyone in the district, reports that something happened, you have to take it as a bullying case, you have to, you could give the preliminary determination, which your district's policies allow, so it could be screened out, but once you hear it, you can't bring it to someone's attention and then say, but I don't want you to do anything about it. Saying if the parent comes to any, and this is any staff member in the district, says, don't do anything, I just want you to know about what happened, too late. Once you said this happened, you have to move with the case, you have to investigate if appropriate, unless you can screen it out, but you cannot stop moving forward. What if they won't provide any written information, refuse to cooperate in the investigation? And I can say, I'll turn to my side here.
Still have to continue on the other end of the list.
Exactly. You're still going to investigate if they're not cooperative, might make it more difficult to investigate, but the fact that they don't want to talk to you isn't going to say that now you don't have to do the investigation, you're aware of it, you have the investigation, certainly with him, maybe someone talked to you, but you still have to continue on with the investigation. And that brings up an interesting point too, remember, your parents cannot refuse to allow you to interview their students. An incident occurs, you do not have to wait for the parent to show up, Gospie Lopez, three court case from the mid 1970s, you have authority over the students at the school, when the incident occurs, you do not have to get parent permission to interview their student, nor do you have to have them present in the room to interview the students. Actually, I would say it's a ban I have, to have a parent present in the room to interview students. You're probably not going to get good information if you do it that way, but there is no right to stop the interview, stop the investigation. Same if you're sent down for a code of conduct violation, the principal can interview you. They can figure out what happened, they can impose discipline, parent doesn't need to be, so you keep that in mind. Yeah, why would parent, you know, the last question, why do you think they want you to not investigate after they tell you about it? I can't put your heads down, I guess I could.
Blowback or repercussions?
Yeah, they're worried, you know, repercussions, whatever, they don't want to cause an issue, they just want you to be aware of things, they have to understand, you can't say, I want you to be aware of something, but do nothing, I just want you to keep an eye on my child. Yeah, it doesn't work that way. Once you bring it up, and it affects, the parent can file too. So if the parent files a request for an HIB investigation, or the student, once they report to you, and for a staff member, it's a mandatory report, have to report it same day. They have to tell the principal, you have a dance on Saturday night at 10 o'clock, you see a bullying incident, you have to phone the principal before midnight. It's same-day report, follow-up with the recording writing, but it's a mandatory report, has to happen the day you witnessed it. You cannot unseize things, unhear things, which happens, you have to investigate it. New legislation, so we had the original laws in 2011, they were made into 2012, 2022, a bunch of new amendments were into place. Laws of 2021, Chapter 338, was actually signed in January this year, January 10. So a few different things were changed in the law that makes some significant changes. They were going to make some really significant changes, so did a lot of groups like ours lobby, so the changes weren't quite as difficult for districts as they might have been, but it will affect parent rights and things that school districts need to do. So there is a significant couple of changes for parents that were in place in the past. So now, there's a new crime, the crime of cyber harassment, there's some new procedures here. So a lot of the bullying, probably half the incidents are more of a cyberbullying. It happens, you're using your computer, using your phone, you're doing it on school grounds, off school grounds, and that's important to note with the definition, the bullying doesn't have to happen at school. Anything that has a connection or nexus to the school, so bullying, cyberbullying at night, on the bus, whatever it might be, any of those incidents that they touch upon the school, you still have jurisdiction over it and an obligation to investigate. So if I'm sitting on my computer at midnight, typing something to another student impacts the school, you have the disruption, still investigating that, so they don't have to be sitting here when the bullying occurs, they can be on the bus, wherever. And keep in mind too, if you have students in improved private school, which I'm sure you do, which the district basically does, they investigate the bullying incidents that happen at the school. Anything on the bus or at home at night, you investigate. They're your students that you contracted to send out to an improved private school for students with disabilities. So whenever they're not on the ground to that school, it's your bullying case to investigate, not the private schools. If it happens at both places, you investigate together, but they only have an obligation for what actually happens at the school, everything else is yours to investigate, which is a lot of the bullying incidents.
Whose responsibility would it be, under a pseudonym or a non-known name, so it's not identifiable, is it a cyberbullying, you might have a situation?
Well, if it's cyberbullying and you can't say who the perpetrator is, you're asking then, you might, you have to make reasonable efforts to try to figure that out, but there might not be repercussions. If it's cyberbullying, you'd still try to investigate, because you can get anonymous bullying, bullying involves too, they're harder to investigate though. You have to figure out, all right, who actually did it, if you can. And that isn't always something you can do. You've got to make reasonable effort to try to figure out where it came from, but you're not necessarily always going to be able to determine who made the online posting or what have you. So your investigation might not get anywhere if you can't determine that. You can only go so far in trying to figure out, where did this internet posting come from? So if it's not clear, it might be that you're unable to figure out who the perpetrator is. Doesn't mean you wouldn't do something for the victim, you're still going to provide counseling services, whatever it is they may be, based on the impact, but you might not be able to figure out who actually did the bullying, but you do have a trial. But yeah, it's an excellent question, you're not always going to know, depending on how good people are at covering their tracks, you might not know where it actually came from. Oftentimes though, maybe I did it, but then a friend of mine knows it, and they tell you, oh, wait, John's the one that did the posting. Things like that will happen, people put things on private websites and the like, but then somebody that you gave access to shows it to the district. That can come up with personnel things too, you think it's a private Facebook page, but then somebody that you friended shows the school district what you posted or whatever. So sometimes that'll give you your ability to figure out who it is. I told somebody I did it. Yes, we were laughing, I was posting it, and then somebody decides to say, well, you know, I actually know John's the one that did it. So you might get the information that way, you're not going to have to have some computer tech person in your school try to trace it back, but try to make reasonable efforts to figure out who made the posting, if they don't just say this, you know, it's online page, that type of thing. So make your reasonable efforts, and if you can't, you might not be able to conclude there's a perpetrator, and you might not be able to have that ultimate conclusion it's bullying, but again, you still have to help the victim, you know, to the extent you can, even if you can't figure out who the perpetrator was. Any other questions on that? So, oh wait, but, thank you. So these new provisions, cyber harassment, anyone under the age of 16, now a municipal court judge can order a parent and the student to attend training when they engage in cyber harassment. If they don't show up, it's $100 first time they don't show, $500 subsequent offenses, so you can compel, the court can, you to be trained along with your child if they engage in cyberbullying. And I think the third bullet's probably the most significant, now there's parental liability if there's a willful or wanton disregard for exercise of supervision. So your child engages in bullying, not necessarily liability. They engage in bullying because they did something you encouraged them to do, you now could be sued, because districts always get sued in these cases. Bullying occurred, my child couldn't go to school, whatever, now the parent of the perpetrator also is subject to litigation, again, if they don't exercise appropriate supervision over their child. So you're doing everything you can as a parent and they happen to bully, no, you're not going to be able to be sued for that, but you're encouraged behavior, or just don't care, you know they're up to something and you ignore it, then you can be subject to liability along with the school district. In those cases where your child engages in bullying, you could be a defendant in any litigation, so the victim's parents can sue the perpetrator's parents in those cases. And that's been in place since the law went into place January 10. What we're going to do, next slide, going forward, the provisions for the school district went into effect July 1st of this year, which is the first day of the new school year, so they, you had six months to prepare for those new provisions. So you have a preliminary determination policy, which basically means your principals in each of your schools are able, they consult with the ABS, the anti-bullying specialists, you get a request or a complaint for bullying, they can look at it and you say, all right, let's assume everything alleged in here is true, could it meet that three-part definition of bullying? If it can't, you could screen it out and not investigate that case. You would still assign it a number on a form we're going to talk about, but you could decide in that case, we're not going to investigate. It's important though, you're not doing a mini-investigation, I'm just going to go talk to the two kids real quick, get some facts, then decide whether to screen it out, that would be illegal. It's take everything as written is true, you assume it's all true, would it not be bullying? If so, then you can screen it out. And again, you're consulting with the ABS, but you're going to be reporting data on that. And one other thing too, your superintendent, everyone goes to your superintendent now, they can overturn that decision and say, no, I want you to investigate that, I think you were wrong on that. So no matter where the school, whichever school it is, they're all going to the superintendent, and the superintendent makes the final call on, yes, you were right or wrong to have screened that out, and yes, don't investigate or no, I disagree, you're going to investigate the case. They'll all go to the superintendent. And now you're collecting for monitoring purposes by the state, data every time you do that, by school. And so they're going to be collecting data, they're going to have a statewide database, which they already have, the SSDS, they're going to be collecting the information, and they're going to be looking at data from your school district, comparing your schools to each other, because it's not district-wide, they're doing it by school. They want to get a feel for, as a school and as a district, how often are you screening out the cases? In his school, is it 90 out of 100 were screened out, in his school, three were screened out, and they investigated the other 97. They're going to be looking, doesn't make you right or wrong, but it's data they want to look at as part of probably CUSAC, going to be part of state monitoring. They're going to want to look at these data to get a feel for, what are you screening out, how often are you screening them out? And if they think you're overdoing the screening, they're going to be looking at those data. So, you know, the department's going to be looking at all that data, and, you know, you're going to make a determination whether you've done something inappropriate, or perhaps, they might suggest, well, why are you screening so much out in school number three, but in the other schools, it seems like you're investigating more. So there's just going to be more scrutiny in what you're doing. And again, every determination is going to be going to your superintendent for his final, or his or her final review. Next slide. Also now, there's new penalties for the students that are perpetrators of bullying. The way we read this at Legal One, it starts prospectively July 1st of this year. So first, second, third bullying offense, when you're the perpetrator, you're not going to go backwards and say, what did you do in prior school years? You basically all get a clean slate, but when you hit your third offense, the penalties are going to be a little bit different. And if you're in the school district K to 12, if you were found to engage in bullying in first grade, then again in fifth grade, then the third time is 10th grade, that's when number three would kick in. It's not in the same school year, it's your third time in the district. And again, we also read it as in the district. If you transfer from another district, we wouldn't count the bullying incidents from that district, it's three times in your district, and here's what happens. So first one, you have to put a copy of the investigation in the student record, you're subject to remedial measures, counseling, behavior intervention, whatever it might be, it could be discipline, you're going to do the same for first and second, so there's going to be something in your file if you've been found to have engaged in bullying. Third time, you have to do everything in one and two, then you have to develop a, the principal has to develop an individual student intervention plan. You're going to have relevant staff members join you, that is the principal, to develop the plan, and shall be approved by the superintendent. So in each of those cases, they're going to develop a plan to basically address the behaviors that are causing, whatever the bullying behaviors are, you got to come up with a plan to stop the behaviors. They don't want the same kids being engaged in bullying over and over, so they want you to come up with a plan to address it. Couple quick points there, remember, if you have a student with a disability, you should probably have their case manager as part of the group, and you should make sure that if they have a behavior plan in their IP, this doesn't conflict with the behavior plan in the IP. It should be consistent, not conflicting with what you're already doing. And so, you know, do keep that in mind, but you're going to do this third offense, doesn't matter how many years apart they are, once you hit third offense and subsequent, you have to do this each time, develop the plan, look at the plan, make sure somebody's in charge of implementing the plan to hopefully stop the student from engaging in the bullying behaviors. You know, and anything, if it's, you're reporting obligations under the memorandum of agreement, the superintendent will be doing that. Do keep in mind in these cases, under your MOA, bias crimes have to all be reported to local law enforcement and your county prosecutor. Half of the bullying incidents in the state are actually bias crimes, as long as they fit within the LAD or Title VI as far as race, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, those categories, disability, all of those cases have to be reported to law enforcement. Statistically, about 80% of them are not being reported by districts around the state. You might be the 20% reporting them all like you're supposed to, but technically, under the law, it's a mandatory report, most districts aren't making the mandatory reports. They get it, they may or may not do anything with it, usually they're probably not going to charge this kid with a crime, but they're supposed to get the report from you, and then they'll decide what to do with it. And again, statistically, most of the state is under And again, statistically, most of the state is under reporting those. So just a quick side note, district should be reporting it, they'll decide what to do with it, but it should be the county prosecutor, local law enforcement doing that. Next slide. And on this, you have to have the, on your website, the current version of the New Jersey Department of Ed document, which you do. I've looked at website, at the website. When they update that, which they're working on, you'll have the updated version of the guidance for parents on your website. And there will be a school climate state coordinator when they hire them. There is no state coordinator yet, but there will be one to assist you in this area. Next slide. And you have to keep, as far as this goes under this law, you have to keep a record of every, the date, time, manner, whenever you notify a parent about an alleged bullying incident. I'm sure you were already doing it. Now it's mandated by the law. You have to detail it. So if I called the parent at 9:15 in the morning to tell them their child was a victim of bullying or alleged victim, you have to make sure you're documenting all that. Every time you're providing parent notification, you have to document every single notification you gave, when you gave it, the details of that, you have to keep that. Written reports or if anything filed by the staff member have to be on a numbered form developed by the department, which they did finally issue at the end of August. It was a little bit late, but the 338, the new form has been issued by the department. All of your bullying complaints, remember it's a mandatory report for staff, board members, everyone in the district has to be on that form. There's a parent version of the form too. So the parents would use the same form, even if it's anonymous reporting, the parents would, you could put that on the website to fill in by the parent for the anonymous report. Do keep in mind, if the parent does not or will not fill out the form, you still investigate the bullying incident. If they won't fill it out, a staff member can fill out the form for them. I would put a note there per an email or call from the parent reporting bullying, here's what was alleged. But that form from the state has to be used by everybody that's doing the bullying reporting and it's got to be numbered and it's mandated for all your staff and all your contractors. So you contract for service providers and the like, they have to report, they have the same reporting obligation, use the same form. And then again, it's submitted to, you know, to the principal. You keep every, all these forms on file at the district. They have to be available for online submission because again, you have to have an anonymous procedure for parents and students to report bullying. The state's guidance says that you can have anonymous reporting by staff, but we're commenting on the form, at least at PSA, it doesn't make sense because it's a mandatory report. How can you tell whether your staff did what they were required by law to do with the mandatory report if it's anonymous? So it doesn't make sense the way their guidance reads to say that it could be anonymous by a staff member to make an anonymous report that you have no idea whether they did it or not because they did it anonymously. So it doesn't quite mesh. Next slide. And note two, the law clarifies a redacted copy of the form removes all student identification information, information is shared with the Board of Ed after the conduct, conclusion of the investigation if a hearing's requested by the parent. So you get the information, but you're not told who the, who the parties to it, the victim, perpetrator, witnesses. You're not told who's part of the bullying incident. You get them, you affirm, reject, modify each determination, but you're not going to know who actually was involved in the bullying incident. You'll just know what happened in the incident when you're making your determination and there's the appeal to you. One thing you will know, which you have to keep confidential, whoever appeals to you. They're going to come argue before you in executive session, not open public meeting, that you'll know, but this ensures confidentiality by retracting the form so that no information's provided outside of the small group that needs to know about it because with student record, if you don't have educational responsibility, you don't get to see student record information. Doesn't matter if you work for the district or in the board, whatever, only certain people can see certain information. It's got to be kept confidential under FERPA and state law. So this is reiterating that in the new changes to the law that it will be a redacted version of the form. And you have to have an online numbered form for parents, which has now been created by the state. So that needs to be added to your website. You have to have their ability to confidentially report the HIB incident online. And again, you know, this form came out at the end of August, so you'll have to probably have, but you have to update your website to make sure that form is now on the website so that the parents can use that form. Next slide. So the forms, we give you the links and these are all good links in the PowerPoint. So you could just use the links to get to the form. It was an August 29th email. They gave you their guidance on implementing the law, revised model policies online, the 338 form is online, the parent version, district version. They have it in PDF and Word, I believe, both forms, or at least one of them's in Word. So all that is at these links. You can certainly take a look at the guidance from the Department of Education at those links. Yeah. And again, when you're looking at the model policy, they talk a lot about it not just discipline. Yes, you can discipline the students, but they really, the law has always stressed and continues restorative justice, student intervention plans. They're really looking for you to address the behaviors, try to stop the behaviors or prevent them in the future is really what the focus of the law is, not just on disciplining everyone that engages in bullying, but looking at the causes, try to address that to hopefully get to the point where the same student doesn't engage in multiple bullying incidents while they're in your district or in your schools. They'd like to get to the point where you address that through these plans and all and get to the point where the incidents are actually not occurring. Outing students, that's a good point here. Keep in mind, when you're investigating, you have to tell the parent what the basis of the bullying incident is, but under the LAD and the state guidance, if a student is transgender, changes their gender identity, doesn't want the parent to know, parent's not allowed to know. You cannot as a district tell the parent, if the student says no, doesn't matter if they're in first grade, 12th grade, whatever it is, if their gender identity is different than what the parent thinks it is, you're not allowed to tell the parent what the student's new gender identity is. You have to keep your student records, you might have two sets of student records and all. So whatever you're sending home reflects the gender, the parent thinks the student what their gender identity is. And then you use different set of records in school based on their actual gender identity. Same thing here. If it's based on, I'm, you're transgender, you get bullied for that, you have to say something carefully along the lines of it was based on a perception as to gender identity. You can't tell the parent that the student's gender identity is different if they don't want the parent to know. It's always student-driven under the guidance. And so when your ABS's principals are providing notice, the principal to the parent, you've got to be careful how you do that to make sure you don't violate these other laws when you're telling them what the basis was for the bullying incident. So it makes things a little bit complicated, but you have to be careful not to violate one set of laws while meeting the reporting requirement under this set of laws. You have to comply with both, which is a little bit tricky, I think at times for districts, but you have to be careful how you do that. Next slide. You know, again, the form, it talks about staff members, you know, have to verbally, if there's an incident, you have to report it the same day you learn about it. Having an anonymous form for staff members doesn't really make sense to us. So, you know, we've made comments, whether the department will change its guidance, I'm not sure, but the form is allowing them to report anonymously, which leaves you no way of knowing whether your staff's actually complying with the law and making the mandatory report. So we've made comments, anyone else can certainly, they're taking comments on their guidance, they might revise it, might not, we'll have to see what happens with it. So, because you're not going to know whether they're actually complying with the reporting requirement if they're reporting it anonymously. So we'll have to see, excuse me, what happens with that going forward. Next, next slide. So for districts, you know, you have to obviously revise your HIB policies, you have to have all the amendments to the Bullying Rights Act in your new policies, has to be submitted to the executive county superintendent schools, requires the two board meetings. Obviously you have the reading and the second meeting before you can do that. You have to have the link to the policy in the forums on your website, which you probably have that already, you know, staff recording requirements, you know, we'll see what exactly what happens with that. And again, we have the link to the website so you can take a look at the new policy, the different requirements and all, you could take a look at that at your leisure and we'll go to the next one. For your district then, the training plan, we're at the last bullet actually on the training plan, your staff members are part of the ABS Certificate of Mastery program. So you know, you've had the, you know, the review by the team, you've had your consultation and the like, as far as that goes. They're completing the Professional Advanced Mastery course now. There is online training required as part of that. There's two different mandatory trainings online, one's 17 hours, the other's three and a half hours. So the staff's going through all that training. They'll also be doing things in groups and then at the final part of that, they'll be doing a project, a report out and all, then they'll get their certificate from our office when they've completed the program. And again, all your staff, that, all your ABSs on your staff are part of the program and they're going through that now. That should actually say October 17th, it was scheduled for last week, but it was canceled at the last minute, so I should change the date to today as far as the last bullet. But, so your staff again are going through that. There's a bunch of self-study pieces, but then a lot of group pieces and working together. So they'll be going through all that process, ultimately completing the course with their final presentations. They'll complete the course and they'll have their certificate of mastery, which I'm sure they're all very good already, but this will put them at a really high level as far as understanding the laws, procedures, what they have to do, working with the students. There's a lot of things on the repercussions, working with the students and all. So you know, very comprehensive course that they'll all be completing. Next slide. So you know, the cert, it's, I kind of went over this in advance, sorry, jump slides, but you know, it's the two online courses. The third thing they will be doing is investigation techniques that might be online or it might be in person. I think we're working to actually train them in person with Adam Drew on that. He's really good at investigation, so they'll all be going through that training with him too, either the online or in-person version, which is really good. He's very good at training them, how to ask questions, interview witnesses, things like that, very good at that. So that'll be part of the training. Then they'll have the group and individual coaching sessions and the final presentations. Like I said, I sort of jumped ahead, somebody asked if I memorized the presentation, sort of. So yes, so you know, they'll finish going through that. Little bit on a couple of other areas, I have a few more slides. So curricular mandates, diversity, equity, inclusion. Remember that is K to 12, it's part of the curriculum, curricular mandates. You have to address discrimination, race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation and the like, have to be addressed. As far as opt-out of the curriculum, keep in mind, the only parent opt-out is for health, family life, sex ed, and it's a limited opt-out. It should just be the pieces of the curriculum that the parent objects to. Remember there's a by law 150-minute per week mandate for health and PE in the state of New Jersey. So it wouldn't be an overall opt-out of the entire health curriculum. Most people probably don't object to bicycle safety, things like that. So the pieces the parent objects to, they could opt out. Every other part of the curriculum, there is no parent opt-out in New Jersey. So all the other parts of the curriculum, whereas most of this DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion information is, cannot be opted out. It's only in the health curriculum. When you look at the state guidance, they made that clear in the Q and A. So it's a limited opt-out, one little piece of the curriculum, the health piece only. And that again, is case by case, you should look at the pieces, they should opt out only in limited areas because they're still going to have to get their 150 minutes a week of health and PE every week that they're in school, every year that they're in school. Yeah, so the, as far as new requirements, we always have new curricular requirements in New Jersey, the latest being the Asian American Pacific Islanders, sexual abuse awareness, again, the diversity and the like, and I think it's laws of 2021, chapter 32 is the diversity curriculum. All those areas have to be put in your curriculum and almost none can be opted out because almost none are in the health curriculum. So do keep that in mind. I know it's a bigger issue now, but it's a very limited opt-out in New Jersey, limited to health unless the laws change, that's the only area with the opt-out. Yeah, so again, as far as impact of bullying on the curriculum, you have to take a look at that. You know, what do you do with data from alleged confirmed incidents? How would that inform your curriculum? Anyone have thoughts on that as far as the bullying incidents? Would you, I guess, staff or board members, as far as how's that going to impact your curricular requirements? Might it cause you to perhaps change things a little bit depending on what you see culturally perhaps in the district? Just answer for you, I guess, yes. When you're looking at the incident, if you notice incidents going a certain way, certain types of bullying incidents, certain characteristics, you might want to look at your curriculum as far as tweaking the curriculum, how you're, you know, how you're providing that in certain areas, adding certain things to perhaps address areas where you see a need in the district based on the bullying incidents. They want you to look at the data you're getting. If there's certain characteristics, certain areas that are always at issue or often at issue in your bullying cases, you might want to address that in the curriculum. What is it culturally and the like in the districts that's causing bullying incidents of certain characteristics or whatever? Maybe it's not, maybe it's all over and you won't see a trend in the data, but you should be looking at that. You know, if they're targeted because of a protected class, you know, it might impact the delivery of instruction perhaps. You have to look at that, you know, if you're targeting, if you have a school district with racial incidents, maybe you have to look into that culturally. Is there something you need to do in your district to address those incidents? You have really, like the Asian American Pacific Islanders legislation, a lot of things were happening during the pandemic, blaming people of Asian, you know, descent because of the pandemic, you know, that became a thing where there was more incidents, not just in school districts, but in general, blaming certain people for the, causing the pandemic and the like. So you, you want to look at that, it might impact your curriculum, how you're providing it, your instructional plans and the like. You want to look at that and see if what you're seeing in your data, the state wants you through the laws to look at what you're seeing, try to address cultural and other issues in the district through the curriculum and the like. They want you to look at those areas, make sure teachers are getting information they need to make any adjustments to the curriculum because obviously that's going to come from the administration down, telling the teachers what you want them to focus on in the curriculum and the like, based on things you're seeing again, if you're seeing patterns as far as bullying incidents and like. So First Amendment rights, keep in mind, this came out about a year and a half ago, the BL case from the, I think it's pronounced Mahanai School District in Pennsylvania. So this was a student, she didn't make varsity cheerleading. So she went home on her own device, on her own time, at night and basically F cheerleading, F softball, F school, F everything. She was mad at everyone and basically posted online, F everything. The coaches found out about it, they took her off the cheerleading, the JV cheerleading squad, which is the one she made. She sued and when she was in college, a final decision finally came out, if you go to next slide. It got to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court said, no, you violated her right to free speech because it didn't touch upon the school. The key thing here, it really didn't change the law very much because if there's a disruption to school, substantial disruption, which is part of New Jersey's bullying definition, then you can look at the outside speech and the outside conduct. And so severe bullying with a substantial disruption is one of the exceptions in the BL decision, not following school procedures for homework assignments, things like that, use of school technology and threats to other students or staff, all exceptions in Justice Kavanaugh's decision here. So yes, students, more so than staff, have free speech rights, what they do on their own time, on their own devices, keep that in mind. Your devices are yours, whether they're at their house or here, just like the devices that staff use are yours, they're not staff's, you're letting them use it. Same with the students, that's different than using your own device, your own phone, computer, whatever it might be. So yes, they have expansive free speech rights, not if it's touching upon the school or disrupting the school. So they do have those rights, but this didn't really change things much. If you engage in bullying at home, still a bullying incident, subject to investigation and repercussions at the district level because it disrupts the school as part of the definition of bullying. It is an exception to the free speech rights. Religious expression, I was going to say that, that was okay to go to that slide. Religious expression, do keep in mind, besides overturning Roe v. Wade, there were several decisions this past June, the Kennedy Bremerton School District case, this was a prayer at school case, this was a football coach after football games would kneel at the 50-yard line, say a prayer after the conclusion of the game. District said, you can't do that. They had also told me can't lead students in prayer pre-game, post-game, he stopped doing that. Here, they said, we're going to terminate your contract if you do it. He did it, they terminated the contract. Court said, this, in the facts of this case, that was violated his right to exercise his religion, free speech rights because he was doing it alone. He wasn't compelling students or football players to join him. And they stressed too, they said, well, you weren't supervising students. They said, that's fine, except that everyone else was sitting, making dinner reservations, chatting with people in the stands, milling about, not supervising the team either. So if you're going to say supervise, then all the coaches have to supervise, not just the one whose conduct you wanted to penalize. I mean, there were some factual arguments, but this is the facts as the court saw in this case, and they basically said, in this limited circumstance, if you're allowing others on your staff to talk and mill about and do things and make their plans for the night, if he chooses to pray while others choose to text, not really any difference. If you're allowing the conduct, you're allowing the conduct. And so in that limited circumstance, you're allowed to do it. Doesn't mean you can necessarily pray in school, you can't stop class to lead students in a prayer. This was on his own, not compelling students. And again, there were some factual arguments that players felt like they had to join or they weren't going to get playing time. Court rejected those arguments, saying no facts to support it. So if you force the kids to pray with you, that would violate the First Amendment. You can't do that, but on your own time doing it was okay. And again, it was, I kind of went over this slide already, but it was, you know, during time when everyone was allowed to do what they felt like doing, and that's important to note. If you're going to have the policy and try to hold it to them, no, you have to supervise the students, which you have to supervise students. Staff, you know, they're yours to supervise, case law is very clear on that. They're your responsibility when they're in your care. You can say, I want everybody supervising the students and doing that, but then you have to actually enforce the policy. You can't say, you weren't following the policy because you were praying, don't really care that you were, you know, calling your spouse to plan dinner. It's all or nothing in that case. If you're going to have the policy, say you're supervising kids, not doing other things, everybody has to be held to the same policy or you're not going to be successful in a case like that. We're at the end, so questions from any, whoops, excuse me. I'm surprised I haven't fallen over this cord yet, but any, I mean, I know I went over a lot of stuff. I have to stay here so I don't block his camera.
So I have a question. So I see on the website, we have the staff, we have an anti-bullying link.
I have to go.
Just to follow through on the staff reporting form, it goes to the New Jersey Department of Education, I can't see right now, but I looked at it earlier, basically.
I can show it to you here. So basically, there's staff reporting form, family caretaker.
Yeah, 3:30.
Right, and so that goes to the New Jersey website, right?
Well, it's on their website, but you'll use that form for the staff report.
So just, so just to kind of like go through the steps, so the parent would fill it out online, download it, and then email it to the district contact information for the anti-
Bring it in, they could-
Oh, bring it in.
Submit the form, but if they don't, if they say, my child was bullied, and they refuse to fill out the form, then one of your staff members would fill it out for them.
Okay.
You do not say, fill out the form or I won't investigate. That's why I noted earlier, if they say, I won't do it, I can't do it, I'm non-English speaking, I can't fill out a form because I can't write in English, whatever the reason might be.
Sure.
A staff member needs to fill out the form for them. And I would note on the form, attached to email, if the parent files a bullying complaint, send you an email says, my child was bullied, attach that to the form, but fill out the form based on what they've told you.
Got it, okay, okay.
So yes, they want them to use the form, but no, you don't say, I won't take the case if you don't fill out.
Right, I was just trying to, so basically, you would then, the parents, just if we were to, you know, share with the, with the community, the parent would then, when downloaded and reach out to the anti-bullying officials of that building?
Or you'd file with the principal.
With the principal, okay, got it.
I mean, it will be assigned to an ABS, unless it's screened, the principal can consult with the ABS, say, taking all facts as true, this can't be bullying, in which case they might not investigate, the superintendent will get that. And right on the form, I think it's box two on page two or three of the form, he has to check off whether he's going to make the investigation go forward, or he agrees that it should be screened out. But he'll look at each one of those and make the final call on whether it really probably should be screened.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a follow-up question. When the, and I think this is great, you know, updates and all that, when the legislature updated this law, did they provide any funding for this? Because we were at municipal lines and we heard about just the number of investigations that our staff have to do, taking away from their counseling work, that we fought so hard to get school counselors in our district, so.
Great question. Most laws includes no funding, this does not have any funding included with it. They usually do not include, it's usually obligations with no extra funding. So you get your state aid categorical general fund, but they didn't include any extra money with this specific legislation. Would have been a great idea and a great help, but there was no actual funding included with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I got to stay out of this campus. Okay, well, thank you for inviting us tonight. And again, remember, you'll have the link, we will send it to you, you can all have the PowerPoint, turnkey it, we'd just like you to keep our logo on it if you would. If you don't, I guess, we're not necessarily going to do anything, but we appreciate you giving us credit for it at least. If you have questions or whatever you think of later, you remember your ABSs are going through the mastery program, whatever, you could ask through them, contact us, you have our contact information if something comes up. And actually, I would have never first remembered that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would have been calling and asking you to mail this to me, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of the night.
And now we have our Spring 2022 NJSLA Assessment Results Presentation by Dr. Feltry.
Thank you very much. Districts must report statewide assessment results to local school boards within 60 days of receipt of the results. This includes NJSLA, mathematics, science, access for ELLs and DLM results. And just so that you know, the NJGPA, we should be receiving in the district this week, so there will be that report that I'll be doing in the future because the state didn't give it to us all at one time, so going to apologize in advance for that. The number of students for reporting is a minimum of 10 as per suppression rules applied to student data to protect student confidentiality. The NJDOE plans to publicly release statewide assessment results in late winter 2022. Next slide. The New Jersey Student Learning Standards for English Language Arts emphasizes the importance of close reading, synthesizing ideas within and across texts, determining the meaning of words and phrases in context, and writing effectively when using and/or analyzing scores. The five performance levels for the NJSLA ELA include the following. Level five is exceeding expectations, level four is meeting expectations, level three is approaching expectations, level two is partially meeting expectations, and level one is did not yet meet expectations. Students performing at levels four and five met or exceeded expectations and therefore have demonstrated readiness for the next grade level or course and ultimately are likely on track for college and careers. This table depicts student performance at the five performance levels for each grade as well as all grades. Given that we were emerging from two school years disrupted by the pandemic, we are pleased with student performance as the majority of our students met or exceeded expectations. This slide is a graphic representation of the previous slide illustrating student performance on the NJSLA ELA by achievement level. This slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA ELA by race. This slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA ELA by program. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for Mathematics measures student proficiency with grade or course level skills, knowledge, practices, and concepts. The NJSLA Math focuses on applying skills and concepts, understanding multi-step problems that require abstract reasoning, and modeling real-world problems with precision, perseverance, and strategic use of tools. They have the same five performance levels as I described for ELA, and again, students performing at levels four and five met or exceeded expectations and therefore have demonstrated readiness for the next grade level or course and ultimately are college and career ready. This table depicts student performance at all five performance levels for each grade level three, or for each grade, three through eight, as well as Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Again, given that we were emerging from two school years disrupted by the pandemic, we are pleased with student performance as the majority of the students met or exceeded This slide is a graphic representation of the previous slide illustrating student performance on the NJSLA Math by achievement level. This slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA Math by race. This slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA Math by program. In grades five, eight, and 11, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Science measures student proficiency in scientific and engineering practices in the context of cross-cutting concepts and disciplinary core ideas. Scientific and engineering practices are essential strategies like developing and using models that scientists and engineers use to do their jobs. Cross-cutting concepts are general concepts such as patterns or cause and effect that are useful in understanding any branch of science, and disciplinary core ideas are overarching ideas such as matter and its interactions that are fundamental to understanding science. Because all three types of standards are interconnected, they reinforce understanding of each other. The NJSLA Science divides students into four performance levels. Level four, advanced proficiency, level three, proficient, level two, near proficiency, and level one, below proficiency. Students performing at level three and level four are considered proficient and above, and they demonstrate an appropriate or exemplary understanding of the science standards. This slide is a graphic representation of the previous slide illustrating student performance on the NJSLA Science by achievement level. This slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA Science by And this slide is a graphic representation of student performance on the NJSLA Science by program. The accessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state or access assessment for English language learners assesses students in grades K through 12 for their English language proficiency. The results of the data inform language instruction for English language learners. The proficiency levels shown on the right side of the slide range from entering through reaching. When students reach an access for L's proficiency level of 4.5 or higher, they are exited from the ELL program if multiple criteria support the decision. As a reminder, to protect student confidentiality, the sample size for reporting results is a minimum of 10. Since we had less than 10 students per grade level in grades five through 12, that data was combined for reporting purposes. In our ELL program, we tend to have more students come into our district in early grades and they exit as they progress through their school years. This is reflected by the data in the table where we have more students in the entering and emergency, entering and emerging proficiency levels in our youngest grades and greater numbers of students at the bridging levels in the older grades. Since the access for L's proficiency level of 4.5 or higher is required for exiting a program if multiple criteria support the decision, we have very few students who test at a reaching proficiency level before exiting the program. The Dynamic Learning Maps or DLMs were administered to students with the most cognitive, with the most severe cognitive differences. The DLMs were administered for literacy and math in grades three through eight and grade 11, and were administered for science in grades five, eight, and 11. Again, to protect student confidentiality, the sample size for reporting results is a minimum of 10. Where fewer than 10 students were tested, results have been grade-banded for reporting purposes. As reflected in the table, 38% of the 13 students assessed in literacy in grade three were at target or advanced, 30% of the 10 students assessed in literacy in grade four were at target or advanced, 36% of the 11 students assessed in literacy in grade eight were at target or advanced, and 35% of the 20 students assessed in literacy in grades five through seven and 11 were at target or advanced. 43% of the 14 students assessed in math in grades three were at target or advanced, 50% of the 10 students assessed in math in grade four were at target or advanced, 9% of the 11 students assessed in math in grade eight were at target or advanced, and 17% of the 23 students assessed in math in grades five through seven and 11 were at target or advanced. Of the 10 students assessed in science in grade eight, 20% were at target or advanced, and of the 10 students assessed in science in grades five and 11, 40% were at target That's it, thank you very much.
I have a question. I just thought of it now, actually, so sorry. I was looking at the math for, it's slide seven, and I was just wondering, for HMS Algebra I versus HHS Algebra I, are the students taking the same exam?
Yes, they are.
So, and so similarly, from HMS Geometry to HHS Geometry?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any conclusions to be drawn from this? I mean, I recognize that at middle school, students who are taking algebra and geometry may be more advanced than their peers, so I mean, I see that there are no level one or level twos at the middle school.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, does that, like, how does that translate at all? Like, are there any conclusions that we can draw by just looking at that versus like at the high school level?
How do they, I didn't hear your question. How do they translate?
Well, I'm just looking at the comparison. So at the middle school, there are no students who are at level one or level two for Algebra I or Geometry. And I recognize that the students there who are taking it, this is, I guess, it's accelerated or advanced or whatever you want to call that.
Right.
At the, at the high school, in the, you know, Algebra and Geometry, we do see, you know, at least for Algebra, like 13% at level one, 21% at level two. Are there any conclusions we can draw from these comparisons, like, in terms of like, or additional supports that we can think about in the next budget cycle to improve those numbers? I mean, that's like a third of the class.
Yeah, if you're taking Algebra in, in ninth grade, most likely you're developing your mathematical conceptual knowledge, if you will. But we look at these in conjunction with other assessments in order to support and help students. It's, I want to caution using these results only, especially if you're looking at a particular student and making assumptions because a sick child may have come in and taken an exam and would not necessarily have performed as well, or somebody who really doesn't understand the math, this is showing up. So we have to use this in conjunction, not alone.
Right, and I remember years ago, we used to have double-period Algebra I, and that was, it was shown, I believe, that the data did not support having double-period. Are there any other supports for students in math at the high school level who are still struggling?
We actually, last year with the Estra funds, we ran a program. I would have to have the math supervisor, you know, look at whether or not any of these students participated in that or not, because obviously it was voluntary. Unless we can build it into the school day, everything would be outside of the school day.
Right, okay, okay, thank you. I'm just thinking like about how we can support those students that are down there, especially, I mean, high school Algebra I, nobody was in the level five.
Right.
So it's concerning. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we'll continue.
All right. It will be brief. We had the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights with respect for this year, October 3rd through October 7th. At all levels, they had programs that addressed district garment, and, you know, I'll give you an example of Triangle School in order to show that their triangle pride values with the outside community. Students and staff made donations all week long to go to the Community Assistance Network Food Pantry in Milk Carlsberg. At Otten Road, students engaged in a variety of activities created by the school counselors, focusing on showing respect to others and what it meant to be respectful. At the middle school, throughout the week, there were words of wisdom messages around respect included in the morning announcements and other activities. And at the high school, they recognized historic contributions and daily announcements from diverse ethnic and religious backgrounds. They also focused on Red Ribbon Week, drug awareness at the football game, including community members as well as cheer, dance, team, and senior council advisors. School Violence Awareness Week is October 18th through 22nd, is designed, you know, that schools will provide students with age-appropriate opportunities to discuss violence prevention and school safety, as well as conflict resolution, peer mediation, bullying prevention, and issues of student diversity and tolerance. The Amsterdam Media Specialist, I'd like to congratulate Rebecca Barakas. The Amsterdam Media Specialist, I'd like to congratulate Rebecca Barakas, who entered her DOT and Activities Bulletin Board Display in a contest and was selected as a winner. In addition, receiving a copy of the book, The Playful Life by Julie Jones, and was invited to be part of a book study and help collaborate on development on STEAM challenges. Hillsborough Raider Marching Band, on October 8th, they were first place at the Ludwig User Classic Division Four Open at MetLife Stadium with the caption awards for best music, best overall effect, and best visual. And then on the 15th, they placed first in the Class AAA at the NJ MBDA Competition held at Monrel High School with caption awards for best music, best overall effect in their class. Congratulations to them.
All right. That's it. All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll continue on with the agenda. There are no minutes to approve, so we will continue. We will move on to comments from the public board. We very much welcome input from, sorry, this is on the action agenda and the 2023-2024 budget vote. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's for by law 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. We rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board in cases where the board believes that there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy. The board president or superintendent will address the comment. Every time a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions, kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session. So, again, if you want to speak, please identify the agenda item that you'd like to speak to or mention that you're commenting on the budget.
Amy Salinter, teacher at Otten Road and AKA Treacher. I actually had a clarifying question about Dr. Phil's presentation. Is that okay now, or do you want me to do it again?
It's not action agenda, so if we could do that during the cycle?
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Hi, 13.3. We should be rebelis, huff, plane. So, it sounds as though a transitional primary, commonly known as the TP program, was not offered in the most recent years. I was thinking that this might have been a temporary measure and could possibly have been reinstated when the district was on better financial footing. I see in Agenda Number 13.3 that TP was being removed from Policy 5112, which is entrance age. I urge the district to share with the public how things have gone over the last few years without TP and what the plan is for students who would benefit from this extra year between kindergarten and first grade. For example, are we working more proactively to identify students in pre-K who would be good candidates for a full day of kindergarten if this is still an option for those who need it? When students first arrive in kindergarten, are we identifying students then as well? Or if a student is not quite ready to move to first grade after kindergarten, will they repeat another year of half-day kindergarten? Or will they be moved up to first grade and monitored more closely? Also, how are push-in and pull-out classes going? Are these being offered at both ends of the spectrum, those who need more help to master grade-level work as well as those who would benefit from enrichment? Do all six elementary schools have these opportunities and determine the need the same way? Reach has been cut back several times, and I feel that we have not heard the exact plan moving forward, what this would look like. For example, in K through four, we used to have one-reach teacher per school. And this is sort of related to the budget as well. Then, then it was cut in half, and so one teacher covered two schools. Starting this year, all K through four positions were removed, and the media specialists are being required to add this to their schedule, regardless of how large their elementary schools are. While I'm not familiar with what the program looks like in ARIS, which is Hillsborough's school for fifth and sixth graders, it sounds as though reach classes were once very small, possibly between 12 and 16 students, and now they're quite a bit larger. I believe I heard that one class has 33 students. Sharing with the public what the newest program will look like will be helpful, including sharing how many minutes a cycle will be provided to the students. I trust you will do a good job, think outside the box, and develop a great program, as I know you are, committed to providing a superior education for all students who they will lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. End quote, from your mission statement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think we can provide some updates in the next board meeting around the changes to TP. Any additional public comment for the first session? All right, seeing none, we will continue and move on to the action agenda.
Yes. I'd like to present for consideration approval of professional travel-related expenses. Firm the superintendent's HIB determination for the attached cases. Approve the 2022-2023 nursing plan. Approve affiliation agreement with Montclair State University. Approve field trip destination. Approve the application submission and award acceptance for grants. Approve PSAT Proctor. Approve policy and regulations, second reading.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board on the, this action agenda?
I do have a question. And just a couple of us were wondering, Susan Radwin is on the professional travel-related experiences as Director of Technology. Is that her position? And that was just a typo?
Yeah.
So, it's a, is that, is she the one who's going? And it's under her profession? Or is the Director of Technology going?
She was the one who went.
She's the one who went. So, we'll amend that to title.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions by the board? All right, we'll take roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Give my reason.
Human Resources, approve resignation. Approve revised future mural advisor. Approve revised transportation driver's hours. Approve revised leave of absence. Approve revised mentors. Approve contact, contract change. Approve transfer, change of assignments. Approve leave of absence. Approve appointments. Approve mentors and buddies. Approve student speech-language specialists. Approve sixth and seventh period coverage. Approve extra coverage. Approve group changes.
All right, I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
All right, any discussion by the board on the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll take roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes. Motion passes.
13 operations. Present for consideration to approve monthly bills. Approve change orders with H&amp;S. Approve policies for second reading. Rescind parent transportation contracts and approve revised parent transportation contracts. Approve regulation for second reading. Approve transportation contract amendments with Frank D. Valcheck Incorporated for the 2022-2023 school year. Approve the use of facilities fee schedule.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion by the board?
Yes, I have a comment. So, as I had emailed earlier today with respect to Regulation 7510 and 13.5, it's just more like something I thought about, which is that the township now will be free of charge to use our facilities. So, I was just wondering if on page four, where there's the fee schedule for use of school activities for Class One users, if we should actually just list the township versus, like, with a reference to the agreement that we, you know, approved a couple of meetings ago? And just really, the reason for that is so that we have it captured somewhere in case, you know, there's change. And then that way, at least, people will be like, oh, yeah, that's in, it's in the policy or it's in the regulation. It's just a suggestion.
That probably makes sense.
We can, we can note the, we can note the amendment there?
Okay.
Okay.
So, it'd be like AA4?
AA4, right.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So, we're gonna vote with it?
We'll vote with that change embedded.
With amendment. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll take roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes.
Well, then we'll move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's for by law 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board in cases where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy. The board president or superintendent will address the comment. Every time a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions, kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Okay, taken. Amy Salinter, teacher at Otten Road and AKA Treacher. I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood correctly the comments about the Algebra and Geometry for the NJ SLA. Because you had mentioned Level One and Level Two, which having 0%, and if I'm reading this correctly, Level One and Level Two are not meeting expectations and partially meeting. So, 0% there would be good, meaning that we had no students following there. And in HMS Algebra, 7% are in the highest category. HMS Geometry, 30% are in the highest category, which is good, which are both higher than their high school counterparts. So, I wasn't sure if the, like, when you asked about drawing a conclusion about placement, like, to me, that would say when we're identifying students for accelerated placement, then we're doing pretty good. And I could have heard it wrong. So, that's why I just wanted to make that clarification from my part.
That's correct.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get?
I have one.
Oh, sorry, sorry. My apologies. I'm jumping the gun here. Been a long meeting. We'll move to board, board comment. Jean, you had your hand raised.
Just real quick. I wanted to remind the board that Jirt will be sponsored, will be on Thursday, this Thursday, October 20th, at 6:30 at the high school. The one-man show and assembly, it's gonna be really good. He's a great storyteller. And again, it's sponsored by the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Lions. Free show at the high school, please come. We spent a lot of money on it. The students will see it during the day, so please tell your friends. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Nurse?
As a parent of a high schooler and an educator for a while, I have to say that I was surprised when we got notice that state-mandated test results were coming home by a backpack at the high school through their English classes. And I am hoping that we can look into that. And I believe that something like that should be sent via USPS mail. And I'm hoping that we can make sure that happens as we move forward with state testing.
All testing will be sent through the mail.
Pardon?
All future testing results will be sent through the mail.
Great, thank you.
Any other board members? And I'll just mention that I attended the Dancing with the Athletes event this weekend, which was very well done. Our, our student representative, Ray Fafana, was one of the hosts of the event. And it was kind of enjoyable watching the students try and do dance routines with, with the dancers of the school. So, congratulations, everybody who participated in that. And I will move now to adjourn the meeting. So, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn. Thank you.